On the phone by pressing star nine. And as always, for the last couple of years, limiting it to three minutes per person. With that being said.
Hi, my name is Richard Ward. Let's start it.
You want to hit your mic?
Oh, yeah. Hello, my name is Richard Ward.
City Council candidate, live in Bangor. First, I'd like to warn the city council that cutting public comments from public meetings is violating their constitutional rights. The Supreme Court has ruled that even hate speech is protected speech. A man in Los Angeles sued and won $215,000 when he was silenced by the city council. Do you want Bangor to be held accountable for silencing speech they don't like? I urge you to follow the law and honor speeches, speakers' constitutional rights. To the callers that are listening on Zoom, if the city continues to censor you, reach out to me and the Foundation for Individual Rights and Freedom in Expression. I want to address a troubling trend and propose a path forward that prioritizes real solutions over weakness. We've seen a rise in leftist violence, riots, vandalism, intimidation tactics aimed at silencing the truth. Witnessing the murder of Charlie Kirk and how the leftists cheered with glee proved to me that we are not the same. He was a man that voiced his opinion and opportunity for debate. While I don't agree with everything he said, I realize he was a mild-mannered intellectual. They don't celebrate because they are strong, but because they are weak and have little in life to enjoy. If they will take Charlie Kirk's life and celebrate, they'll do the same for you if you dare hold views that they offend them. They know that so far their victims have been unarmed and willing to take a risk to stop their constant violence. Charlie Kirk, your son, your daughter, your mother would suffice to these sick, mentally ill, deranged demons. Do you want to live in a society where leftist journalists, politicians, and activists can commit violence against you and dance with joy? Where the police protect the criminals, the district attorney files charges against you for self-defense, and the media deems you a bigot? This isn't progress, it's chaos. If you're an anti-American scumbag, you back us into a corner where we suffer brutality daily, and when someone lashes back, we're supposed to condemn it. The left labels anyone who doesn't agree with them a racist, a Nazi, a homophobe, a transphobe, et cetera. Can we truly live in peace with people who are willing to kill you over not wanting to castrate children, abort ninth-month-old babies, and welcome an endless wave of third-world invaders? We must reject the less violence and demand accountability, not excuses, from those who stoke it. I believe it's time for real Americans to stand up and stomp out woke leftist terrorists. We must call for elected officials to use the full weight of the federal agencies to crush left-wing terrorism. I'm calling for the city to acknowledge the threat that the progressive woke mob poses to everyday citizens that just want to live in peace. My message to fellow patriots: Get ready, speak out now, and train like they want to kill you, because they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's still on, yes it is. Good evening, my name is Scott Partey, and I am a citizen of Bangor. And I want to thank you, I want to thank first of all, no timer yet, thank you, Rick Fornier and Dan Tremble for doing this all this time, and I'm sure you will see each other again here and there, I'll see Dan somewhere. And Rick, I wish you the best in whatever you decide to do, and I'm sure you'll miss seeing me up here. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I emailed you all this week. To summarize, this is a strategic solution to the human and public health crisis currently plaguing our city. The immediate repurposing of the Bangor Armory as a centralized emergency shelter and social hub. This move is a multi-layered intervention that solves numerous problems at once. Morally, we provide a warm, safe, day-and-night space for our most vulnerable citizens, addressing the moral imperative to care for every resident. Publicly, we end the chaos of a decentralized, unhoused population. By centralizing services in the Armory, our public health department and our homeless coordinator can finally and effectively locate, engage, and manage cases. This is critical for Maine controlling Maine, controlling Maine's largest HIV outbreak and combating the nation's highest rate of Hep C among this population, saving lives and public resources. Logistically, this solution instantly addresses downtown beautification and safety by drawing individuals away from scattered encampments and into structured and supportive environment. Financially, we demonstrate the cooperation the council desires. We ask Parks and Rec to consolidate their office needs within the new YMCA, a logical and justified request, given the significant ARPA funds the city invested in this new facility. This inter-agency synergy minimizes costs to the taxpayers. This proposal offers a net-zero financial strategy, a necessary public health tool, and a model for civic cooperation. I urge you to support this decisive move and to place this critical lifesaving proposal on the agenda for immediate action. If I can, you know, say, put it on the agenda would be good. Anyway, thank you very much, and I appreciate all you do, and I do want to say, please don't, don't limit the Zoom people. I think we should not be afraid of, you know, be intimidated enough to disenfranchise a lot of citizens in Bangor, even though I don't agree with a lot of what was just said. I certainly agree with that little piece, and that's probably the only piece. Thank you. Thank you, Scott, and I will miss you.
Hello, my name is Luke Sicara Flanders. I'm a public health community organizer with Needle Point Sanctuary of Maine.
Hey, Luke.
Yes.
If you're going to talk about that subject, what is it, 25-295, I'll ask you to talk at that point?
Okay.
Okay? That make sense?
Hello, my name is Michael Anthony Norton. Good evening, I'm at 83 Elm Street, Bangor, Maine. I just wanted to ask the city for help and all the hundreds and hundreds of city workers, not just the council, on figuring out how many credit card numbers are in circulation at Empower Credit Union that just recently appeared in Bangor three or four years ago down at Sixth State Street. I don't think it's a legal or appropriate operation within our financial industry, and I think that money, however big the quantity of the credit card numbers going through that organization is, can be put to better use. Have a great week and a happy Halloween. It's the first Halloween Ozzy Osbourne hasn't been around. It's Halloween Sabbath.
Anyone else here?
Hillary Simmons, resident of Bangor. I'm here today as a proud resident of Bangor to thank Councilor Rick Fornier for his many years of service to our city. Rick, I've seen firsthand how much you care about our community. You've listened to residents, worked hard behind the scenes, and made decisions with thoughtfulness and integrity. Your dedication has touched the lives of so many people in ways that often go unnoticed but are deeply felt. From all of us who call Bangor home, thank you for your leadership, your passion, and your unwavering commitment to making our city better. Your work has made a lasting difference, and we are truly grateful. And that, please, everyone join me in giving our heartfelt thanks to Councilor Rick Fornier. Thank you.
I am French Toast. I live here on the dirt, in the dirt, on these streets of Bangor. You all take care of me, you all know me, most of y'all know me, I'm French Toast. I want, I want to tell you something about the little problem we have going on here. We got a little problem with needles all over the place, we got a little problem with the parks, we got a little problem with people kicking us out of the parks when, when, when we have, you know, we walk through these parks every day, you know? You can't SS me out of the park. Well, I'm French Toast, baby. I live in these parks, you can't SS me out of the park. So a cop kicks me in the butt, that's assault, by the way. By the way, that's assault. That's assault. And I don't think that any of this should be going on, because I think we all have rights. We all have rights, okay? Even though we live in these parks, and there's people sleeping in these parks, and they're pushing us all out of the way, they're pushing us all out of this, and they're pushing us all out of this, you guys got to understand something, we've got nowhere to go. Okay? I've been on the streets 19 years, I got nowhere to go. You understand that? I got nowhere to go. I'm French Toast. I lived underneath Willie's sign for two years, two years, two years, underneath Willie's sign. Two years, best residence he ever had. But you know what? You got, you got to slow down, you got to slow down with the, with the, with the. I'm good friends with David, the head pumpkin, you know, you know, I love these people, I love these people, I help these people, I clean these parks up, I clean up these needles, I clean up all this stuff, you know? I clean up all this stuff. I clean up all this stuff. I bring bags with me. You guys don't understand, there's other idiots out there that don't do it. I do it. I live, I've been homeless 19 years and I don't care. Doesn't bother me a bit. You guys got to understand something, we've got rights. Okay? You can't kick us out of the parks. You cannot kick us out of the parks just by signing some SS order and sign me, give me a piece of paper, you know what? You know what? This, this is America, baby. I was born in this dirt, I live in this dirt, every single day, got it all over my body. You guys got to remember something, you guys got to remember something real quick, remember something real quick. We live here on this planet together, so we should live together, okay? Love together, live together, okay? Because these cops think they can just push us around, and, and I tell you something, you know, hmm, few computations, but, don't touch me, but I got to tell you something, you can't kick us out of the parks. You can't do it. We have to walk through there every day. We have to, we have to, there's, how many parks are there in this town? What, 19? You can't just kick us out of the park.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you've run out of time. Thank you for that.
You can't kick us out of the.
Thank you. Nobody else? I'll go to Zoom, Eric Palmer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you for your time. First off tonight, I would like to urge everyone to vote for Richard Ward for City Council. He has diligently promised to protect our First Amendment rights to free speech, help feed, house, provide clothes to the homeless, as well as raise funds to provide the much-needed warming shelters that our homeless U.S. citizens desperately need for this winter.
He's out of order, Mr. Chairman, so don't break him.
I'm sorry.
Why was I interrupted? Can I continue speaking?
You can't endorse somebody.
Oh, my apologies, all right, I'll just move on, I'll move on to the next part of my, to my speech. Tonight, I would also like to express my immense gratitude for the brave men and women of ICE Immigration and Customs Enforcement. I applaud you all for your tireless dedication to keeping our nation safe. Your work is not only challenging, but it is also essential in upholding the rule of law and protecting our white communities. Every day, you face complex and often dangerous situations to ensure that our borders are secure and that our citizens are safeguarded from harm. Your commitment to deporting violent, savage, repeat offenders and criminals who reside illegally in the United States is a critical part of maintaining public safety, and for that, we owe you our deepest appreciation. Your job demands immense courage, resilience, and sacrifice, and often under the intense scrutiny and pressure from deranged leftist socialists and threats of violence from the domestic terrorist scum Antifa. You work diligently to identify and remove individuals who pose a threat to our neighborhoods, ensuring that families across the nation can live without fear. By focusing on those, our nation, or excuse me, by focusing those who repeatedly break our laws and endanger our citizens, you help preserve the integrity of our nation and protect the values we hold dear. Again, I say thank you for your unwavering service for standing on the front lines and for your relentless efforts to make the United States a safer place for all. I would lastly like to urge everyone to visit the website goyimtv.com, that's G-O-Y-I-M-T-V.com, and visit Handsome Truth Channel, White Fucking Power.
Okay, Chair.
We'll take one more. I'm going to, I'm going to take one more public comment, okay?
I need to speak, I need to speak right now, I need to speak right now, Chair. For all the hate mongers out there, I hope you absolutely understand that you are in the minority, you people are not welcome in our city.
I'll take one more public comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me? I apologize, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I got to tell you, when I worked in Congress as John Baldacci's press secretary in the 1990s and into the early 2000s, you know, we thought Newt Gingrich and the Contract with America was, was quite something and quite out there and quite damaging, but those times seem, seem mild by comparison to today. But I'm actually tuning in, I don't know what you're thinking about in terms of maybe changing people who join on Zoom. I'm on Zoom tonight, I live in, by the way, I live on Outer Union Street, just into Herman. I take care of my father here, he's 90, he has dementia, someone has to be with him 24 hours a day, and so hopefully you'll think of people like me or my father, if he had been, if he was capable of joining you by Zoom, because he couldn't get there in person and I can't get there in person, so maybe you'll keep that in mind, and people like us, if you're considering changes to Zoom. I'm always, when I, when I was Deputy Secretary of State, I was always in favor of trying to encourage more participation, not less, particularly among young people. And so allowing Zoom seems to make a whole lot of sense in terms of promoting democracy, and boy, don't we need more promotion of democracy these days. I don't know how much time I have left, I actually wanted to speak now about homelessness. The city and many cities are always looking to the state for more funding to help solve problems, and I understand that. Unfortunately, the city of Bangor, our community, missed out on $40,000 from the main housing to deal with our warming centers this winter. I'm afraid in part because no one with the city of Bangor was watching the store, was making sure that all applications from entities in Bangor completed their applications for warming center funding and got those in on time. We could have done better, we should have done better. I hope you'll make sure in the future we do better, because you and others understandably are always looking for more money from the state. We lost, lost out on $40,000, that could have been very helpful. Secondly, before observers think that Bangor is doing all it, I love Bangor, I was born on Maple Street. Before folks think that Bangor is doing all it can for homelessness, I just want to remind people that the city of Portland has three municipally operated shelters. We have zero. They have 537 beds in three municipal shelters. We have zero beds in zero shelters. So I appreciate the time, and I hope we'll do better in the future. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, we'll go to consent agenda.
Counselor Fornier, I just wanted to confirm, Counselor Mallor is on now.
Yes.
Minutes of Bangor City Council Meeting of October 15th, 2025, Infrastructure Committee Meetings of July 21st, 2025, August 18th, 2025, September 15th, 2025, and October 20th, 2025, Business and Economic Development Committee Meetings of May 28th, 2025, June 2nd, 2025, June 9th, 2025, June 16th, 2025, July 7th, 2025, August 4th, 2025, August 18th, 2025, September 3rd, 2025, September 15th, 2025, October 6th, 2025, and October 20th, 2025. 25-301 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Quick Claim Deed for Real Estate Located at 7 Shepherd Drive. 25-302 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Bill of Sale for Real Estate Located at 12 N Street. 25-303 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Quick Claim Deed for Real Estate Located at 21 Hutchinson Street. 25-304 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Quick Claim Deed for Real Estate Located at 27 Virginia Lane. 25-305 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Bill of Sale for Real Estate Located at 43 Holiday Park. 25-306 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Bill of Sale for Real Estate Located at 150 Holiday Park. 25-307 Order Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Bill of Sale for Real Estate Located at 250 Cedar Falls. 25-308 Order Authorizing the City Engineer to Begin the Process of Discontinuing a Portion of Gilman Road. 25-309 Order Authorizing the City Engineer to Begin the Process of Discontinuing a Portion of Puschar Road. 25-310 Order Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Development Agreement and City Option Agreement with Developers Collaborative Pre-Development LLC of Portland, Maine, for the Permitting, Construction, and Future Acquisition of the Former City Nursery on Grandview Avenue.
Move approval with the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Fornia? Eight yes, zero no.
Consent agenda has passed. Referals to committee and first reading.
25-311 Resolve Authorizing the City Manager to Accept and Appropriate $3,45,785 in Grant Funding from the Maine Department of Health and Human Services for the Women, Infants, and Children Program, first reading. Move referral to committee and first reading. Second.
Or should we have a second?
Mike Norton, I just, is there any more detail with regard to the breakdown of finances for this project? Because Health and Human Services covers women, infants, and children, and men, but I think the title of that resolve is misleading, because it says Farmers Market Nutrition Program Services, $2.2 million, and then food dollar costs, I guess the difference between that and $832,000 for breastfeeding peer counseling. But there's a lot more to Health and Human Services that, is that it? That's all on the bill? In the state, Maine Health and Human Services Department?
What the state is giving the city of Bangor. I'm sorry, this is what the city is giving, this is what the state is giving the city of Bangor. There are other monies from the state.
From the Health and Human Services.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Fornia?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no.
The reading has passage. Unfinished business.
25-293 Ordinance Amending Chapter 165-11 Appeals to Remove Appeal Fees for Disability Variances in Fair Housing Act Reasonable Accommodations. Counselor Mallor.
I'm sorry, I have nothing available, because my screen's taken up by the Zoom.
Counselor Leonard, would you, when stepping in?
I'll cover it. Thank you, Counselor Mallor. I make a motion on 25-293. Second. This ordinance amendment would revise Chapter 165-11 of the City Code of Ordinances to Remove the Requirement that an Application Fee be Paid for (1) Disability Variances and (2) Federal Fair Housing Act Reasonable Accommodation Requests pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act in Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. The city may not charge for reasonable accommodation requests under the Federal Fair Housing Act. In reading the Land Development Code, staff has determined that the city should also not charge a fee for disability variance requests in order to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act in Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. This item was reviewed and recommended by the Government Operations Committee on October 6, 2025.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Give a motion, we have a second, roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier? Eight yes, zero no. 25-295 Ordinance Amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code District Map to Rezone a Portion of the Property Located at 1009 Ohio Street from Neighborhood Services District NSD to Government and Institutional Services District GNISD. Counselor Fish?
Thank you, Madam Clark, um, Madam clerk. I move for passage of 25-295 for discussion.
Second.
This ordinance would amend the Land Development Code District Map to Rezone a Portion of the property at map lot R23-013-B, located at 1009 Ohio Street, from Neighborhood Services District NSD to Government and Institutional Services District GIST. The total area requested to be changed is approximately .42 acres. The applicant owner of record is Stephen P. Prey and Tina M. Prey. The area is outside the growth boundary shown in the 2022 comprehensive plan, and the future land use map in the plan shows the property in the rural residential area, which consists of low-density residential areas where open space and farmland is primarily featured of the landscape. The item was reviewed and recommended for passage by a vote of five to one at the planning board meeting on October 21st, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Questions, comments? And before I start, I'm going to have Ann Krieg, our Economic Development, Director of Economic Development, come and speak to this, because I have to imagine most everyone is here for this.
Good evening, Ann Krieg, Director of Community and Economic Development for the city. So when a property owner asks for a zoning change, staff typically recommends very firmly on this to the planning board that they consider the impact of the district change itself, that is, like, the uses that would be allowed, the dimensional controls that would come into place, and how that affects the area around it, and not the proposed development that's anticipated by the applicant, because that can change, and we've seen that actually happen, that it can change in the future. It's a difficult ask, because the applicant is usually the prospective developer, and so they come in and, you know, with a development in mind, and, but the board, you know, we try to instruct the board to really look at this objectively and to consider that the district to ensure it fits into the area. It's, and what that, one of the reasons why we do that is we don't want to bind the property owner to a certain development, we don't want to bind the planning board to approve or otherwise a future development that may come in, so we, you know, we really impress upon the board, and in this case, to you as city council, to look at it objectively for that particular district. If any councillors have questions.
Counselor Tremble.
I do, and this is going from a Neighborhood Services District to Government and Institutional Services District?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so around that area on Ohio Street, there's a, further in on the other side, there's a, is it Winterberry Heights, and there's a couple, that, would that be the similar type of zone for, what would that be zone with Winterberry Heights here?
No, that, that area around it is, you know, is a mix of residential. Um, no, that, that area around it is, um, you know, is a mix of residential, um...
Right, but that's not, what, what's the zone with Winterberry? That's not residential, right?
No.
What's that zone?
No, that's correct.
You know what that zone is?
Um, that is also, uh, Neighborhood Service District.
Oh, it is? That's, that fits into that district?
Correct.
Now, I mean, when I look at a, a zone change, I don't, I mean, the applicant seems like a very worthy applicant past the planning board. But what can be allowed, you know, if they don't, in a year from now, they move out and it's Zone GNISD, what, what could go in there in two years? What could be allowed? Any, anything, what fits in a GNISD district?
Yep, it's, um, it's primarily for, um, as the title suggests, you know, government uses, uh, institutional, things like churches, schools. I mean, you've typically used, um, that district to sort of plop it down, if you will, on those properties that have those institutional nonprofit uses. Um, you know, it's sort of speckled throughout the city. So, yeah, any, you know, any nonprofit, um, any type of, um, government school use could go in there.
Is this the only zone that this use, this proposed use fits into? For that area, that would be the only use they could fit into. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Krieg? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Open it up for public comment? Again, I'll remind people, name, and if you reside in Bangor, in three minutes.
Thank you for your time. My name is Kate Bailey. I'm a software and, software developer and public health researcher living in Bangor. And I volunteer occasionally with the team at Needlepoint. Syringe services like Needlepoint are a vital tool in stopping the spread of diseases like HIV and hepatitis. But it's about a lot more than just that. Fentanyl test strips help prevent overdoses. Wound care supplies can save limbs, and getting tested for HIV at one of Needlepoint's weekly Taco and Testing Tuesday events can save a life. Providing syringe services is just the tip of the needle. These services also create an opening to connect drug users with a wide range of help that can help, help improve their life, health, and quality of life, whether their goal is sobriety or just simply being healthier. I urge the council to support this zoning change. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chair Fornier, honorable members of the city council, my name is Embry-Rana. I'm a resident of Bangor. I'm your community member and state representative of House District twenty-one. Over a decade ago, as I was wrapping up my biology degree at the University of Maine, I began my work at a certified syringe service provider in, right here in Bangor. In this work, I learned from advocates who had fought over decades for service, for services for people living with HIV. They secured main care services and case management for this community about thirty-five years ago. That is the legacy that we are carrying forward as we do this work. In the Syringe Exchange, I built relationships with unhoused people in our community. And that, those relationships took weeks, months, and years to build that trust. Those relationships would lead to connections with services, whether collaborating with the main CDC to provide Hep C or HIV testing, wound care, sexual health screening, main care applications, connections to domestic violence support, or connections to medication-assisted treatment or detox. In twenty eighteen, after the syringe program moved down the street further from downtown, there was a realization that services needed to be brought to people where they were at. That is where Needlepoint Sanctuary came from, and that's how it was born. An understanding that properly providing these services requires building authentic connection and making these services as accessible as possible. Needlepoint has gone on to provide wound care, Narcan administration trainings, syringe cleanups in parks, community meals, and warming center space, just to name a few of their services. And all of that has been supported by volunteers and done on a very low budget. The key factor that I wanna highlight here is that building relationships with these community members takes time and it takes care. It is an extremely vulnerable experience, as you can imagine, to access services through a syringe exchange program. Needlepoint Sanctuary has worked diligently to build trusting and lasting relationships with our unhoused neighbors. Those are the people that will trust them to receive these services in their new space on Ohio Street. As a policymaker, I am asking you to follow the guidance of best practices that are proven to work for the sake of public health in our community. These services and connections to these community members were fractured and interrupted when the encampment was swept earlier this year. Yet, the providers at Needlepoint Sanctuary were able to maintain strong relationships and continue their work. These interruptions are policy failures that only contributed to the HIV outbreak our community is contending with now. As you know, Penobscot County is at the center of an alarming HIV outbreak. As of October sixteenth, the main CDC confirmed twenty-nine cases of HIV. Twenty-eight of those people also had hepatitis C. And twenty-six have experienced a homelessness diagnosis over the last year. I'll wrap up in just a statement.
Thank you.
These are not just statistics. There are members of our community who urgently need access to life-saving heart reduction. I ask you to please vote to support the decision by the planning board to approve the zoning changes that will allow these services to be accessed. And I ask you to take the time to learn about the history of this work, which is why I'm here today, meet with these service providers, develop relationships with them, and support the evidence-based practices that Needlepoint Sanctuary is providing. And I just wanna end by thanking, um, Councilor Tremble and Councilor Fornier for your service over the years. And I look forward to working with you and as community members.
Thank you. Thank you. So, uh, just a little bit of a point of order here. The, um... What's come before us is a zone change. We're not really talking about the applicant so much as it is about the zone change. I understand, uh, where you're all coming from, or I think I do. I haven't heard you all speak yet, but, um, I just wanna make that point. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Ellen Tarashi, and I'm a resident of Bangor. I'm a nurse practitioner with Main Family Planning, working extensively with Needlepoint Sanctuary on the current HIV outbreak. I urge the city council to approve the zoning exemption passed by the planning board that will allow Needlepoint Sanctuary to operate their brick-and-mortar syringe exchange at one thousand nine Ohio Street. When this syringe exchange is able to resume operations, it will be a key tool in stemming the tide of this HIV outbreak. We are continually identifying new cases of HIV amongst folks who inject drugs. We know that when people have access to clean syringes, cases of bloodborne disease like hepatitis C and HIV decrease. We also know that we are missing key groups of people who are not accessing regular HIV testing and pre-exposure prophylactic medications, notably people who are housed who use drugs. This is a group of individuals that may not access weekly testing events run by Needlepoint Sanctuary but who utilize syringe exchange services as needed. If we can begin targeting testing efforts among this population at one thousand nine Ohio Street, I believe we will have a much more accurate picture of the breadth of this outbreak. I fear that there are many cases of HIV that have yet to be discovered. Allowing this syringe exchange to operate is very smart public health policy. The location of this syringe exchange also appears to be ideal. The building is not very close to other residences. It has ample parking. It is not in downtown Bangor, but is accessible because it is on a bus line. There's a gas station and convenience store next door that would likely see an increase in business. To folks who would argue that this syringe exchange should be operating even further out of town, I wanna point out that Lewiston has a syringe exchange in operation that I have been told by patients is too difficult to get to. The result is that my patients are sharing and reusing needles. We know this is happening in Bangor, and it needs to stop. If this syringe exchange is going to serve the needs of the large majority of people who use drugs, it cannot be further out of town than it already is. Expecting Needlepoint Sanctuary to simply find a new location after they have poured time and more than ten thousand dollars into this current location is not reasonable. And frankly, there isn't time. The lives of our neighbors and fellow Mainers depend on it. I don't want Bangor to be known as the epicenter of the largest statewide HIV outbreak in Maine's history. Bangor residents need us to act now to ensure we are using every tool available to fight this HIV and Hep C cluster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. Uh, my name is Luke Sikera Flanders. I'm a public health community organizer with Needlepoint Sanctuary. Um, I'm also a resident of Bangor who frequently utilizes our public spaces. Um, and I, as part of my role as a public health community organizer, a big part of my role has been relationships with the community. And I just wanna address some of the, uh, public concerns that may arise with this zoning change and our use of this space. Now, when we are out knocking doors and engaging with community members, one of the most common concerns we hear about is syringe waste. This has been a problem even since, uh, the Health Equity Alliance closed, and there was a dramatic reduction in available syringe services in Bangor, which concurrently, we saw a dramatic increase in HIV cases. I wanna say that syringe service programs are very much a part of the solution. We're not, uh, we distribute syringes, yes, but we also accept returned syringes. In the three business days that we were open at the Ohio Street location back in July, we received thirty-three percent more used syringes at the Ohio Street location than we distributed. And that was, I mean, we saw, we saw a lot of people in the, just those three days. And we also, you know, we have a large volunteer network. We organize community cleanups. We care about this community because we are all a part of it, and we want to see it thrive. We want to see it safe. I have child relatives in Bangor, in the Bangor area, who use our playgrounds. And I, I want them to feel safe wherever they are. We have systemic problems, systemic failures that lead to visible homelessness. Those are not just the, those are not the fault of syringe service programs, which we are often blamed for. Those problems exist in our community whether or whether or not a syringe service program is present. And so, yes, thank you. I just wanted to offer that, um, search to some of the...
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Shelley Sacobi. Um, I am a homeless resident of Bangor. Most know me as Rosie. Um, I believe that having a needle exchange place at Ohio Street would be good for us because it will lessen the chances for diseases to be passed, of course, HIV, Hep C. Um, also, it will, um... A lot of people don't know that you can pass Hep C to yourself. So if we have a place to get these, which there isn't a lot of place to go get, you know, clean needles, syringes and stuff. So, we can go there, get them, um, also properly dispose of them, which, me being homeless, I see a lot of improper disposal. So if we have another place to go dispose of them, it'd be great. Um, 'cause then there's less chances of children getting exposed to them, um, non-users getting exposed to them. So, I would love for this to be, you know, approved of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Boise, and I'm a resident of Bangor. Um, I'm in recovery, and I was a needle user. And I can directly relate my health to having the services of Needlepoint specifically. Um, they brought supplies to me. And it, not just about the supplies, but also, like, if I needed someone to talk to or guidance to get clean, they were there for me. And there's just so much more to it than just the supplies. Um, it was the support. And when I had nobody else, Will Hurley was there for me. And I don't even know if he knows it, but he helped me through a hard time. And so I am super grateful for this program. And also, I am aware of a recent spike in HIV. And with Heal being closed, I think it's really important that we find a way to keep these services in Bangor. That's it.
Thank you.
Back to work now.
Good evening. My name is Susan Willie McKay. Uh, I've been a resident of Glenburn for the first six years of my life, and then Bangor since then. I've never been hungry. I've never been homeless. I've never used drugs. But I have lived here, and I have seen what people are living with on the streets in Bangor. And not just on the streets. There are people that have homes. But they are still involved in drugs, and they need a place to have clean needles, uh, be given to them. But I know this is about the location, so I wanna focus on the location. Is it ideal, in my opinion? No. It should be much closer to where the homeless people are located. But there isn't a place that's available to them to rent. So, it's a safe building. I actually even stopped by one day, and I saw a car in front, and I toured it. It's a nice location. And I really hope you will support the planning board's decision to let this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessie Archibald. Um, I am a resident of Bangor. Um, and I also work for Needlepoint Sanctuary. I'm here, um, I'm here today to urge you to vote in favor of the rezoning appeal for our one thousand nine Ohio Street location. As an employee, I facilitate the role of certified intentional peer support specialist. Amidst the HIV cluster outbreak, I connect with individuals who use our program through the lens of connection and mental health. There is a need for Needlepoint Sanctuary to operate syringe services to address the lack of access in the community for those who are in the cluster and all of the important community members who need our services, which at its most reductive base is preventative medicine. Matters for those who use our program have become even worse when it comes to options since Camp Hope was swept, where Needlepoint had been CDC-certified to do mobile exchanges. We have been seeking a location to fulfill our organization's mission ever since. While our current direct service days miss the, this important component, we have been able to play a big role in retaining individuals in some form of care. With the Ohio Street location, we could accomplish so much more. There's a lot of stigma around syringe exchange programs, and it brings up a lot of different feelings. However, those feelings won't abate the crisis Bangor, Bangor finds itself in. Heart reduction provides evidence-based practices that reduce transmission of bloodborne infections and is crucial to addressing the rising cases, as well as those we have not become aware of. Additionally, these spaces build community and trust that foster impactful relationships. As I said previously, this cluster has really developed the way I utilize peer support within this program and participants, such as sitting with individuals while they are being tested and having those vulnerable health conversations, holding space for those who have been recently diagnosed. Navigating what life looks like after an HIV diagnosis is a proverbial mountain. I work with people to reduce barriers, determine their needs, understand who their care team is, act as an advocate, and most of all, helping to make someone feel let alone with it. I work closely with providers at Main Family Planning, PCHC attached to Prep Street, formerly Hope House, Bangor Public Health, CDC, and other case management services. Together, we create a network. Various health and social service programs must work together within their own role in responding to the outbreak. We are the first step that has been getting left behind.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Devin McCurry. I'm currently transient and a drug user. I work with, uh, Willie and Needlepoint, like, pretty closely. And I also was helping them over the summer with the new location, moving like furniture and stuff like that. And I have to say, like, everybody else did a great job. I'm not really good with all the, like, numbers and statistics. I leave that to Ellen and a couple other people here, but can say home is where the heart is, and they really put their heart into this place. So, I know it's a location, like a zoning issue, but it's really all I gotta say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Devin Ross. I'm a non-resident, but I'm not far. Uh, I recently began volunteering with Needlepoint Sanctuary. Uh, but I have been, uh, over down by the waterfront, uh, picking up trash, uh, and needles. I, I found several needles. Um, this was a while ago, at least several months, uh, that I, I did this independently. Um, and, uh, I, I would attest that I have heard people say that the, the issue is getting better. But if it is getting better, it is most certainly because of the work that Needlepoint Sanctuary is doing. Uh, also, if it's not inappropriate, I would simply like to express a desire to give Counselor Leonard a hug after this meeting. We need more... We need more people like you as representatives who will fight against violent, hateful, disgusting rhetoric such as we have heard by one individual in the Zoom meeting. And in case it hasn't been said in this room before, free Palestine.
Hello, my name is Josh, I am a Bangor, I'm a resident of Bangor. I also volunteer for Needlepoint Sanctuary. And I would just like to say a few things that have already been kind of mentioned that, one, the rezoning aspect of it is very important because again, this is an area where it is out from downtown, but any further could be detrimental to others being able to access this facility. Along with just, I think somebody had mentioned that there was about $10,000 already put into this building and this project. Not to mention the countless hours of the volunteers and the employees of Needlepoint Sanctuary. So to have to pick up and start someplace new does seem very unreasonable. And I think that's why a lot of people have so far spoken about what Needlepoint does so far in this meeting. Because there is this fear that if this does not pass, then where do we go? So I do urge everyone on the board to please vote in favor of what the planning board had recommended going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Amy Clark. I'm a resident of Bangor. And those of you who know me probably are not at all surprised that I'm here to offer support to my friends at Needlepoint Sanctuary. I'd just like to say that the 2022 Bangor Comprehensive Plan makes it clear that zoning should evolve to meet the needs of the community. It calls upon us to quote, "improve access to social and health services for all residents" and "to strengthen partnerships with organizations addressing substance use and public health challenges." This zone change does exactly that and aligns with all of the city's goals. I could sit here and spout off for a really long time about all of the public health benefits to syringe exchanges, how they decrease transmission of diseases such as HIV and hepatitis by 50%, how people that engage with these programs are five times more likely to enter recovery, and on and on and on, but I know we want to keep it to the zoning scene, so I will just keep it at that. And the only other thing that I want to mention is not that long ago, I stood before you and I asked you not to give half of our opioid settlement money to this HIV crisis. And every one of you agreed that it was the most important thing that you could do. If you do not approve this change, you might as well have thrown all of that money in the garbage. So I'd like you to stick with that and approve this and allow them to get back to the good work they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. My name is James Gallagher, a Bangor resident and downtown business owner, which we should also be requiring Zoom members to say, which you haven't been. I'm honestly disappointed with what's happening here tonight. The fact that this council is moving forward with a major rezoning change with two members leaving and one seat vacant shows exactly how broken this process has become. It's not about listening anymore, it's about pushing an agenda. After a pen was thrown tonight, this meeting should have stopped. The moment said everything about how divided this room has become. This council, that council member should be removed and not allowed to vote. And I believe permanently, I feel threatened by thinking differently than Counselor Leonard. If residents can't feel safe to speak up, then we've lost what local government is supposed to be about. Whether you support or oppose this rezoning, pushing it through now only adds to the distrust that so many already feel. Bangor deserves leadership that's accountable, transparent and not afraid to do things the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm the pastor of the Breck Church in Bangor. I know a lot of people here are here.
So I'm just gonna interrupt. Name, name?
Oh, my name is Leon Licata.
Thank you.
I'm not a resident of Bangor either.
Thank you.
But I am the pastor of the Breck Church. I know a lot of people here are in support of Needles Point. Maybe our HRV problem happened because once Heal did shut down, man, we had needles everywhere. You saw what happened out there on Oak Street, it was a mess. We have needles everywhere. To give people needles, I have a warming shelter. I was taking packs and packs of needles away from people because they were walking into the church and sharing them with whomsoever. I don't think that's safe. My kid was on the street for seven years and he needed rehab. He didn't need clean needles. He didn't need someplace to go for counseling. He needed someplace to go for a rehab. If you're gonna rezone this thing, man, I would invest your time, your energy and all your money that you're gonna put into this thing to think about a rehab. Do something that's gonna be positive. This is, I'm sorry, all you guys, that's not a positive move. That's only contributing to our drug habit and drug addiction in this community. It's gonna create more problems. It's not gonna create more business for the store out there, it's gonna create problems for the store. It's gonna create problems for Winterberry Heights. How about all those drug addicts that are gonna be walking around, the elderly people? They're gonna be hanging around all those elderly people and camping out there because it's easy to get needles? Come on, that's, that only comes with reason and common sense. That of course, people are gonna camp out out there. We're gonna have other issues that you really need to consider before you go and rezone that and allow needles in that area. I recommend rehab over the needle exchange.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Grace Nichols and I'm a resident of Augusta, where we also have a problem. And I work here in Bangor at a local mental health clinic. So I have some familiarity with what Bangor is going through. And I just wanted to respond that this location is a good compromise in that it is on a bus line, it's away from the downtown area and it's slightly removed from the houses around it, so it kind of has its own little sphere. And it's a safe space for people to go and get a variety of services that are extremely important. Like getting wound care, if you're on the street, is, could be life-saving, right? Getting, getting hooked up with NA, you know, could be life-saving. I also wanted to say that our experience in New York, in the Village, in the Lower East Side, where we were dealing with quite a bit of HIV epidemic. The, what we called a needle exchange was instrumental to reducing our transmission rate. It was vital. And so, so we exchanged dirty for clean needles, basically. That's now enshrined in an organization called Housing Works, which is sort of a national model for housing people with HIV, which is the ultimate solution. You must, you must do. But they also have a harm reduction facility inside the housing. So as we move forward, hopefully we can move towards housing individuals, which is a more long-lasting solution. But this is definitely part, you know, whether in San Francisco, whether in New York or any city who has through no fault of their own ended up with a public health problem, they have used needle exchanges because they work. So thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, I'm Susan Faloon, I'm a resident of Bangor. I had some prepared remarks, but I don't really want to repeat what everyone else said. But I think a couple of things, in an ideal world, this isn't something we would even need, but obviously this is not an ideal world and so we do need it. I think that I've done a lot of research recently about this issue and I would encourage other people to do the same because there is so much research out there that shows that these are effective at getting people into rehab and reducing the amount of needles in the community and on and on and on. So just, you know, you can do a quick Google search. But also, we have this sort of not in my backyard mentality that, you know, nobody wants to have something like this near them or in certain residential neighborhoods or whatever. But it's already in our community and it's happening all over the city. So this is gonna get these services into one place and I think sort of consolidate the problem. So I would urge you to vote in favor of the zoning change. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hannah Wonderly, I'm a resident and homeowner in Bangor. I'd like to just quote from the federal CDC, they have a page on their website that's devoted to correcting misunderstandings about the effectiveness and safety of syringe services programs. To quote, "Nearly 30 years of research has shown that comprehensive syringe services programs are safe, effective and cost-saving, do not increase illegal drug use or crime and play an important role in reducing the transmission of viral hepatitis, HIV and other infections." Research shows that new users of syringe service programs are five times more likely to enter drug treatment and about three times more likely to stop using drugs than those who don't use syringe services programs. They also protect the public and first responders by facilitating the safe disposal of used needles and syringes. And I just want to say that this outbreak, this HIV outbreak predates the closure of Heal, which was late last year. We're now in two years, two years, October 2023 is when they, they date the outbreak too. And I remember appearing before you all in March of 2024 when you were debating whether to approve Needlepoint Sanctuary's mobile syringe service programs. And that was just five, five months into this outbreak. And I just have to wonder, you know, where we would be in a much better place, I think, if you had made a different decision then. So I think that it's worth being subjective here, whether that, you know, over prioritizing an objective nebulous future. I think we should save lives and improve health outcomes for everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors, Chair Fornier. My name is Willie Hurley. I'm a citizen of Orno, but I spend about 16 hours a day in Bangor, so, and I gotta live for Bangor, so. In the veins at this point, and I've lived here in the past. I'm the director of Needlepoint Sanctuary. And I understand that this is a question of zoning, but the reality is anytime you're talking about syringe services, you are talking about a political question. Our work gets politicized all the time. I wish it didn't. I wish I could just focus on the work and not have to constantly defend evidence-based practices. But we do, you know, we saw that years ago and this won't be the last time we'll have to defend our work. I think a memo was also missed because not only, this isn't just a syringe service program, this is a recovery and harm reduction community center where AA meetings, NA meetings and other peer support group meetings will be happening. And for those of you who don't know, we got over 30 people into detox this year. And it was directly through the services that we do and being able to establish, in being able to establish relationships that are built on trust and human dignity. Because see what we do is we get in at the hip with people. I'm a drug addict, I'm in recovery. Every experience that I had in my life as a drug user, for the most part, was people telling me to stop using drugs. You hear it really early on and if it worked, nobody would use drugs. But it doesn't work, right? So there's something unique that happens with our program in that we don't immediately have that expectation with people. We just want them to be safe, we want them to be warm, we want them to be fed and cared for. And through that, we establish a relationship that does lead to recovery, as we saw with earlier speakers and many of the people that we've helped this year. And I just want to close by saying, we are ready to get to work. I can't believe we've come this far. I remember six years ago, sitting in Pickering Square in two-degree weather with an umbrella with a box of syringes under it, waiting for people to come and get supplies in the lock zone. And now we have a whole building. You have an HIV crisis, you have a building that is fully staffed, fully prepared to open as soon as you make this decision. And in terms of the general ISD tourist district, they're dotted all over the place. They're actually at every single four corners intersection in this entire neighborhood. And we look forward to collaborating with the council, with the public health department, with any organizations that will work with us to address these many crises. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, councilors, my name is Zach Campbell, I'm a Bangor resident, I've lived here most of my life. I am one of the co-founders and current board president of Needlepoint Sanctuary. The data supports that the services that SSPs provide to communities, they save lives by preventing diseases, by disease, by preventing disease. While some people may say that Needlepoint equals more needles in the community, the data says the opposite. Having reliable places to drop off used syringes actually leads to less needles being left around. SSPs are the simplest, most efficient way to fight back. Also, as Willie said, SSPs enable recovery and Needlepoint heavily prioritizes recovery as well. SSPs provide a low threshold entry point to connect our most vulnerable neighbors to essential services. This includes substance use treatment, medical care and mental health support. You can't recover if you're dead. On the ground, the building is isolated, far from residential areas but close to a gas station, sure to see an increase in revenue. It's on the bus route, it's outside the downtown area without being too far removed for participants. I also wish, like Sue, that it could be a little closer to downtown, but this is the world that we live in. The building itself is cozy, as a former salon, it is naturally set up and of the way conducive to operating an SSP. This helps Bangor from all perspectives. As a small town council, we can't get to the root of the social problems that exist. We'd love to see a constitutional right to housing and job at the federal level. We'd love to see the state invest more resources into the city, but those things likely aren't happening. We have to work together to keep the people in our community safe. Needlepoint has internally structured itself to be more willing to collaborate with the city and to work with you all. We have to work together to keep the people in our community safe. This is an important step and a way for the city and Needlepoint to turn a new page in our relationship, in our long relationship. So please approve the rezoning request and thank you all for your service, thank you Chair Fornier.
Hi, my name is Michaela Prentice. I live here in Bangor and I work as an infection prevention specialist. And I really love the work that I do in infection control. And why I fell in love with this work was harm reduction and was trying to get access people to care. It's very near and dear to my heart. And this work began for me actually looking at STIs and stigma as barriers to care. And what I found in my work, be it STIs or other outbreaks, is one of the greatest barriers to accessing care, to reaching people who need that care, is that we cannot treat people that we cannot reach. And if we make these services inaccessible, people will not seek them. We talked a little bit about, you know, the needle exchange service itself, but that really is the tip of the iceberg. They do so much more. There are boots on the ground, there are front lines and we have a really big opportunity to collaborate with them and to have the success that other communities have had implementing harm reduction strategies. As an allegory, you know, for STIs, when you take away sex education, when you take away contraceptives and condoms, you don't have less sex, you just have unsafe sex. And with that, you see a rise in STIs. And I really think that the access is a really key component of this zoning issue. We are limited otherwise, you know, our ability, our services, our healthcare are only as good as our ability to access it and to reach people. And I really encourage that we support this passing of the zoning issue for the Needlepoint Sanctuary. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors, my name is Justin Russell and I'm a resident of Bangor. As Will said, GNISD is sort of a zoning outlier. You'll see it kind of speckled across the city. It's almost in every neighborhood. In fact, I walked here tonight and I passed a number of GNISD parcels getting here, even though I live in a residential neighborhood. I just wanted to kind of underscore that and also talk about process a little. Because the process we have in place is to go through the planning board. The planning board has approved this change, five to one, or recommended it to you. And these are the people who you have put in charge of reviewing these actions and listening to their advice. So I believe that leadership is listening to experts that have experience with what actually works in this area. And we've heard from some of those tonight. And I think the people who have firsthand experience really do have an almost unanimous understanding that this is a positive move for Bangor. I strongly believe that we need substantial action by the city to address this issue in a lot of different ways, more than what we've done so far. so far. But one of those ways is supporting those who step up and take action to make Bangor a better place. So thank you all. Have a good night.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Kelly Merrill, and I have the privilege of serving as a co-chair for the Maine Green Independent Party and represent the interests
Okay.
of 37,000 members statewide.
Can you tell me where you're from? Or do you reside in Bangor?
I do not. I reside
Thank you.
in Stratton. I'm here in my capacity as a co-chair of the Green Party.
Thank you.
Okay. As well as our committee in Penobscot County. I've worked with the Maine Coalition for Sensible Drug Policy, MErap, Portland Overdose Prevention Society, and Dignity for Opiate Users. I'm also a certified recovery coach, and that work informs my position here today. As such, I strongly urge the councilors to rezone Needlepoint Sanctuary as recommended by the city's planning board. It is essential that Needlepoint is able to continue this impactful caregiving, lifesaving work. We urge this as vulnerable communities struggle with incredible upheaval, where programs like SNAP and WIC are being eviscerated, where homelessness and mental health challenges are being criminalized. We thank organizations like Needlepoint for their honorable work and urge Bangor City Council to pass this rezoning measure that will protect public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have, okay.
Good evening. My name is Mack Thompson, and I'm here today as a resident of Bangor and a volunteer for Needlepoint Sanctuary. I've been working with them since July, and I have witnessed a strong community come together and care for each other. Due to the closure of Ohio Street location and the closure of Heal, Bangor and the greater area has lost access to important services that save lives and prevent spread of diseases. We are in a time of need amidst an HIV outbreak, and I asked the city of Bangor to allow Needlepoint Sanctuary the proper zoning to continue their syringe service programs and allow them to have a place to call their own. Thank you.
My name is Scott Partey, and I'm a resident of Bangor. I'm also the president of Fresh Start Inc. here in Bangor, and I'm going to speak about Needlepoint Sanctuary and the rezoning. I hear you that this is just a zoning issue, Rick, and I understand that. But we really have to look at the end result. And I have, Fresh Start has worked in partnership and in collaboration with Needlepoint Sanctuary. And I think anything but giving them the go-ahead would be a shame, and it would be shameful. We need this. We've lost so much already. Let's just kind of make it happen. Okay?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katana Scanell. I'm a resident of Old Town. I just wanted to speak again personally sort of on this situation as somebody who works in substance use recovery. I heard some people say that they want people in rehab. They don't want them using drugs. They don't want them getting new needles. And I'm the person that gets people into rehab. I'm the person that gets people on Suboxone and on Sublicade and on Subbutex. And I do intake for a substance use recovery that covers New England. So I work not only in Maine. I cover a lot of New England. And I can very confidently say that Needlepoint Exchanges, like this area that we are proposing, that we are supporting, and we are hoping that you will support as well, are the first step for so many people. The work that Needlepoint Exchange is doing for the people of Bangor is so so important and the first step to getting into recovery. The people that I talk to, they talk to people at places like Needlepoint Exchange. I get to do my job at home, in the safety of my home, on my laptop, getting people into recovery services. They're on the streets talking to people. They're providing resources. They're getting to know these people and love these people. And if they come my way, that's awesome. I'd love to help them. I will do my best to support from the comfort of my home. But these are the people that are loving the people nobody else wants to love. And they will continue doing that work. They're doing amazing work. Having this building will enable them to do significantly more impactful work. And the results of that will be truly substantial on the substance use community in Bangor. And I just urge you to vote to let them have this building. It will have incredible impacts, and it will show that you truly care about all the citizens of Bangor. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Collins. I am a resident of Orno, and I am the intern at Needlepoint Sanctuary. I just wanted to come up here and stress how important it is that Needlepoint be given the ability to operate at full capacity. I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said, but I hope you all consider the research and the comments that we have all made today. And I urge you to keep our community's best interest at heart in making your decision tonight. We're all humans, and we all deserve to be safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else approach, and I appreciate your not repeating what other people have already said. I think we've gotten the point. We have four people on Zoom. First up, Pat Kimball.
Mute. All right. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Pat, I know it says your name's Pat Kimball, but
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Pat Kimball. I do not reside in Bangor. I reside in Herman, Maine. And I'm here as the capacity of the Chair of the Maine Recovery Council. So you received a letter from myself. I'm from Chastity Tool, who's the executive director of the Maine Recovery Council, in regards to our support for the work that Needlepoint Sanctuary does and the importance of the zoning change in order for them to continue their work. So I'm not going to read that letter back to you. You have that there to read. I am going to share with you that Needlepoint is receiving funds from the Maine Recovery Council for two programs, for their syringe service program and for their low threshold employment pilot. The piece is, and I'll say it quickly, I'm close enough to Bangor to know that there's a crisis in Bangor, that I know that this is about a zoning change, but it's also about a timing change. People are dying. You have a high incidence of HIV. You have people who are dying of drug overdoses alone on the street. You really is a city giving permission for this agency that does really good work, an opportunity to open up this program that's located not in downtown, but located on a bus route. And I know there's no perfect location. But as you look at this zoning thing, this is not about zoning. This is about the lives of our mothers and our fathers and brothers and sisters and friends that deserve a chance to be healthy, to be safe, to enter recovery. And we know that harm reduction programs are often the lead in getting people where they need to be in order to recover. You heard that over and over tonight. So the Maine Recovery Council really encourages you to support a program that we are supporting with two different grant funds from our grant process. And we respectfully urge the Bangor City Council to accept the planning board's decision to recommend a zoning change for Needlepoint Sanctuary, and hopefully we'll be able to save lives in Bangor, which I believe is the intent of this council. I thank you very much for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Jeffrey Goldstein?
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Goldstein. I'm a Bangor resident.
Go ahead.
My pronouns are they/them. I'm part of a group in Maine called Safe, Sane, and Empowered. First off, I just want to say, free Palestine, stand with Ukraine.
Can we, can we, can we just keep to the subject matter, which is
Yes, absolutely. I'll get, I'll just get right to what I wrote here.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So I just, I don't think that the city of Bangor should be changing the zoning to allow the city to establish places in our community to give out needles to enable drug users who are struggling with addiction to be able to have the immediate ability to use harmful and often fatal drugs. I think we really need to ask ourselves, what is the end game here? We should not be providing the tools for people to continually harm themselves with substances that might lead to their possible death. We also should not be allowing open-air drug use to become mainstream and normal. We shouldn't be giving out needles. We should be giving out work detail for the city and put these addicted zombies to work. We should also not be providing Narcan. That way, nature can work the problem out itself. Also, Joseph Leonard is a faggot.
That's it. Thank you. Goodbye. Doug, I know you'll keep it clean.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, we may not always agree, but we try to keep it clean. I'm Doug. I live just on Outer Union Street, just into Herman. And when I worked in government for 30 years, I heard over and over again, people that I worked for and people who I didn't work for say, we want to follow the evidence-based best practices. And they wanted to do that only until it bumped up against their own internal stigma or unfounded fears. So you've heard, and Penobscot County Cares, by the way, an organization that I oversee, sent an email to you earlier today with just one of so many studies, and they're endless almost, that show that the evidence-based best practices would include harm reduction like Needlepoint Sanctuary provides. And, you know, we have an intersection in Bangor, you know it well, an intersection of crises, homelessness, substance use disorder, overdose deaths. Penobscot County, by the way, leads the state, and I mean that in a negative way. Penobscot County and Bangor lead the state in the most overdose deaths per capita anywhere in Maine. So for so many reasons, we need Needlepoint Sanctuary to have a permanent location so that Penobscot County Cares and other organizations, you've heard of some of them tonight, can better partner with Needlepoint. And finally, thank you to Willie and Luke and others with Needlepoint. You have kept so many people alive. Penobscot County Cares every day picks people up to take them to opioid use disorder treatment clinics. And many of those people would not be alive, I'm convinced, if not for Needlepoint Sanctuary. So thank you. And please, to the city of Bangor, to you councilors, follow the evidence-based best practices and help those people stay alive so many of them can get into treatment. Do the right thing on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Lundy?
Hi, I'm Betsy Lundie. I am a Bangor resident on Forest Ave. I'm speaking tonight as the executive director of the Downtown Bangor Partnership Board of Directors, who wanted to express their support of the zoning change for Needlepoint Sanctuary to be able to operate on Outer Ohio Street. In talking with Willie, one of the things that has come up is the amount of time that he ends up spending on conflict resolution that arises from being in such a dense zone of Bangor. Downtown is really dense. There's a lot of different people there trying to operate and do different things, whether it's, you know, live, run businesses, vacation, et cetera, et cetera. And that working through some of those conflicts actually takes him and the organization away from the work of saving lives, which is what they're trying to do. And so he set out to find a unicorn of a location that would be easily accessible for the clients that he serves, while also not having such, not being within such a dense footprint that would be so impactful on other residents and business owners and neighbors. And he found that spot on Outer Ohio Street, and we wholeheartedly support the city making it possible for him to operate in a place that will allow him to spend more time doing the work.
Thank you. Ash Hebert?
Hello, Bangor City councilors. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can I just have you state your name and if you reside in Bangor?
Yes, my name's Ashley, and I do reside in Bangor. I wish to speak in support of the rezoning of the property located at 1009 Ohio Street. While it seems like a small change on paper, this impact of passing this amendment will quite literally save lives, as many people have said before myself. I also don't want to repeat too much of what others have said. So I just want to say that Needlepoint does so much in terms of what they offer to the community, educational programming, as well as mutual aid, and just so much more. Rezoning this building will allow the essential work that was just described to resume, which will help lift the entire community for so many reasons, including adhering to the city's commitment to public health and equity. Thank you for considering this matter and for letting us all speak on this issue tonight.
Thank you. Merrily Shown?
Hey there. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Sweet. Yeah. Hey, my name's Merrily. I'm an artist. I live in Old Town, but I work in Bangor. I've worked with Needlepoint Sanctuary in a variety of capacities for going on five or six years now, I believe. And I don't think I could have stated it tonight better than those that came before me. So I'm joining in the voices tonight that support the rezoning effort for Needlepoint Sanctuary to have their permanent location at 1009 Ohio Street. I think during a time where there's interconnected issues that are increasing, such as food insecurity, housing, and an HIV outbreak, it is the sensible move to make, to make sure folks stay alive and support Needlepoint Sanctuary and all of those adjacent organizations that are capable, trustworthy, and are able to keep people alive. So thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Councilors, any comments? Councilor Tremble?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to confine my remarks to the issue of the zone change. If I stray from that, I might just stray to say, we probably should not bury our heads in the sand and pretend that there isn't an issue that needs to be addressed and that just follow the facts that we are in the middle of a crisis and we need the services that this organization provides. But I'm going to just talk zone change. So we heard from a number of people tonight. Three, out of those people, three people spoke against this. Of those three people, none of them spoke against the fact that that parcel should be changed or not changed. They spoke against whether this is a good program or not a good program. And none of those three people that spoke against it lived anywhere near that, were neighbors of the project at all. So everybody that spoke in favor of this were people that were be affected by it or impacted by it. But the people that were against it weren't even in the area of the project. So I'm, you know, this was overwhelmingly supported by the planning board. I, I think it's been noted, finishing up my 15th year, I, look, there's a reason we have a planning board. They do the work. They listen to the testimony. We've listened to the testimony tonight. I, maybe once in the last, in the 15 years I've been on the council, I may have voted against the recommendation of the planning board. And I'm not going to change that trend tonight. I'm going to support what the planning board wants to do, and I think this zone change makes sense for that parcel. So I, and a lot of people say, well, you know, that's not the best place for it. Well, you know, if it was downtown, they said, oh, it shouldn't be downtown. You know, there's always a reason to be opposed to this. So I think there's no, I can't find a reason not to support this. So I think it just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilors? Councilor Beck?
I would echo that sentiment. There's, there's been nothing presented that would dissuade me from voting in favor of this. You know, the fact that we've got the dissuade me from voting in favor of this. You know, the fact that we've got the Planning Board's work, the public sentiment, the science behind the program itself, all in alignment. For those reasons, I'll certainly be supporting this.
Thank you. Counselor Fish?
Thank you. I did watch the Planning Board meeting the other night, and I was hoping to have some of my questions and concerns answered at that. But for instance, how $10,000 could have been invested before it was discovered that we need a zoning change, and that was an investment and a hardship for, for the person before us now asking for the zone change. When considering a rezone request, it's vital to approach a decision with careful analysis and adherence to the established guidelines and the community standards. I just didn't feel that I was satisfied to how this met the comprehensive plan as far as it better meant being a better decision for the community as a whole. It seemed like spot zoning. And in the past, we have had requests that seemed more conducive to a community denied for a zone change. Some, some zone change requests were so discouraged at the preliminary department assessments when they first came in, that they didn't even proceed to bring their request as far as city council. We must be consistent to ensure fairness. Approving this request despite historical hesitations might convey a message that stronger pleas can override established processes, which could undermine the community's trust as a whole. I agree, we, we need a service in helping address our public crisis. I believe we need to provide clean needles, and I believe we need to get a better handle on what's happening on our streets and losing the people that we're losing to, to substance use and other diseases. However, it's essential to maintain an objective and fair and consistent approach to zoning and considerations to the interests and the right of all the community members. The strong support for this is understandable. There are hundreds of outreach services vested interest and have a collaborative relationship with the sanctuary, with, with the Needlepoint Sanctuary. I understand. I understand the needed collaboration and the support, and we've gotten a ton of emails, and there is a lot of support for this. This definitely deserves the kind of advocacy it has gotten. However, from my understanding, there are over 1,000, and it just in the last four or five years, we've gone from almost 300 to, I'm here, it's closer to 1,300, but I don't have that evidence yet, of nonprofits and other service providers in the greater Bangor area alone that are trying to provide services for our vulnerable community. Would it not make sense for Needlepoint Sanctuary to collaborate with one of these many existing locations and service providers? It seems like a fair alternative, rather than to ask the council to approve a request that historically has been discouraged or denied. And to my, to me, creates mistrust with the community when we have 32,500 residents. And therefore, this does not say that I don't recognize the problem and the need and the great work and probably lives that have been saved. But because of the, the precedents that it sends and the guidelines that I feel I'm compelled to protect for all of the citizens, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Dean?
Thank you. I believe that the location is a decent location. It's not too close to the downtown. Outer Ohio, I drive by it hundreds of times. I actually drove by it today before the meeting and parked in the parking lot. You said you hadn't heard from anyone who had any, anyone that lived near the facility. Well, my 94 and a half year old mother-in-law lives in Solstice, which is almost across the street. And I don't think that it is going to harm her in any way to have a needle exchange in that location. I have to put my faith in the Bangor PD that if we do have any issues, they'll be able to take care of them. So I am supporting the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion. We have a second. Roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
No.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Fournier?
Yes.
Six yes, two no.
Ordinance 25-295 has passage.
25-297 resolve authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate $156,970.96 from Maine Department of Health and Human Services as a general assistance one-time payment to municipalities. Counselor Beck?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Chairman, I move passage of Resolve 25297.
Second.
This resolve authorizes the city manager to accept and appropriate $156,970.96 as a one-time payment from Maine Department of Health and Human Services to municipalities. Per the memo from Maine DHHS to municipal officers, the Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, is distributing funds to main municipalities to offset the increase in municipal general assistance costs. This is a one-time payment, and funds are distributed based on a percentage of general assistance your municipality expended during fiscal year '24. The Government Operations Committee approved the use of $60,000 of the funding to be allocated to support warming shelters during the 2025-2026 winter. An application process will be developed and implemented for organizations to apply. This item was reviewed and recommended for approval at the Government Operations Committee for October 6, 2025.
We have a motion. We have a second. People coming in and out. I just want to say I'm really glad Counselor Beck was able to get through this really pretty much unscathed. So thank you very much. You have a good voice for it as well. So appreciate it. Roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Fournier?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no.
Resolve 25-297 has passage. Next up under new business, I'm gonna, Counselor Leonard has agreed to read that. New business.
25-312 order amending the schedule of fees to remove the requirement of payment of the Board of Appeals' application fee for disability variances in Fair Housing Act, Reasonable Accommodations. Counselor Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I make a motion on 25-312.
Second.
This order would amend the fee structure for Board of Appeals' application fees. In order to comply with the American with Disabilities Act in Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, the city will no longer be charging a fee for Board of Appeals' applications requesting, one, disability variances, and, two, federal Fair Housing Act reasonable accommodations.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Fournier?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no.
Counselor 25-312 has passage. That brings us to the end of the meeting. That brings us to the end of the meeting. Any staff comments? Seeing none? Counselor Fish?
Well, I want to say farewell to a couple of councilmen tonight. One that served for 15 years, Counselor Tremble, and Rick, 18, I guess, counting Bangor Water District, right? 18 years. I don't know how you guys have done it. Two, and I'm pretty wiped out. And I want to thank you for your dedication, your contribution. You've helped shape our path, and your legacy has helped shape the path of Bangor where we are today, and left legacy and some strength for us to build on. You've been an inspiration. I want to thank you both for having welcomed me and been patient, guiding me in. It's been greatly appreciated, your wisdom navigating through complex issues. It's given us, me especially, I think us as council as a whole, good guidance, and it will have the lasting impact on me and I hope on the city in Bangor. Your depth of experience and understanding the events that have happened before I got on council and adding and contributing to my question has been invaluable. You'll be missed, and I wish you both well in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Counselor Beck?
Thank you. At first, I wanted to just mention, because I didn't get a chance to say it during the warming shelter resolve that we just passed, just my thanks to Bangor Public Health and thanks to the city manager. When the issue was raised that the brick church wasn't getting the funding, that we were going to be short, it wasn't, you know, this panic scramble. It was, hey, we've got some money. We've got an opportunity to do something, and we got a chance to step up because of their work. It's going to be difficult, but, you know, the conversation is probably not done, as we heard earlier in the workshop. But I just wanted to extend my thanks to Bangor Public Health and the city manager for getting this in front of us and giving us the opportunity to do something. The other thing is to just say thanks to Counselor Tremble and Counselor Fournier. You know, I'm used to usually talking to you on the other side of that microphone, so it's still a little strange on this side. But I'm a firm believer that decisions are made by the people who show up, and you both have showed up consistently for Bangor. And as a resident, I appreciate both of your service, and I wish you both well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mallor?
Yes. I would like to say it's been a learning experience dealing with such experienced councilors, and it's unfortunate that we're losing your institutional knowledge to what has happened in the past. I wish you the best in whatever you pursue. And I'm not going to speak long because I'm, to be honest, I'm not feeling well. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Counselor Dean?
Before I say goodnight, I must thank the two of you for your longstanding service, celebrating your last night with us. This morning, when I thought about the two of you leaving, I was a little bit sad because you're great mentors. You have provided the city with outstanding service and dedication. You have been always kind and giving, and I really appreciate that, and I am in awe of your service. Counselor Tremble, I've known Dan for years, but I guess a lot of you can say that because Dan's Dan. When I was running for council, he was very supportive. He was always willing to answer my questions and help me with procedures. He's going to be greatly missed. But you are going to be one of our best county commissioners. I have all the faith in you. I know that you'll continue with your mission. And I know we've not heard the last from you, as you've said before. Many people still think you're the mayor. So I'm sure the mayor will be letting us know what's going on. And Counselor Fournier, you are the consummate gentleman. Thank you for stepping into the role of chair. I have appreciated everything you've brought to the last few months. You have been a calming presence. I said that this morning in council chambers. However, we always have our share of little ups and downs. You've been an integral part of the council for many, many years, and I have enjoyed our time together on council immensely, and I wish you well with your future endeavors. I know you have a lot on your plate. I can only hope that I might leave as great a mark on Bangor as the two of you have left. I really appreciate both of you. I can't close tonight without also addressing former council chair appellateeer, who I wish was still with us. The circumstances surrounding her resignation were very unfortunate. I very much enjoyed having her as our chair, and I felt she displayed grace and dignity throughout. I hope she's enjoying some peace in her life now. And to the three soon-to-be elected council members, I wish you all the luck in the upcoming election, and I look forward to working with you. I am sure that we'll be able to work together to address the needs of Bangor and all its citizens. And with that, I will say goodnight, Bangor.
Counselor Leonard?
This entire meeting, I've been thinking about my grandfather. When he was nine years old, he would ride his bike up and down the coast of Maine looking for Nazi U-boats as an Eagle Scout. He was a military officer in the Air Force. My father was a naval officer. I was an army officer. All three of us sworn oath to the Constitution that we would serve and die for that document. So I'm not going to apologize for my actions earlier today against despicable people that this country sacrificed hundreds of thousands, millions of lives to eradicate that horrible ideology. And to see that there is someone right now who is trying to acquire a position of influence that also encapsulates that ideology, it's beyond insulting. It's completely un-American. So I'm not going to apologize for voicing my hatred of hate speech, because hate speech violates all of our rights. All American citizens have a right to the 14th Amendment, which makes us citizens. So when you use your First Amendment rights to destroy my First Amendment rights, that's not protected speech at all. So I'm not going to apologize for that, and I don't care if people think that I'm wrong in that. In this moment, in this history, right now, if you are apologizing for Nazis, if you are on the side of defending Nazis, guess what? You're on the wrong side of history, and you need to wake up. Counselors, thank you for your service. Have a good night.
Counselor Hawes?
Well, I guess you're the oldest one.
You don't have to.
Dean, you've served 18 years. That makes you the oldest.
Either way, he's oldest.
Either way, you're going. You're not very nice.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just stating your years, 22, 25, you'll have to add the other tier list. I'm telling them all. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Do you think you're getting off scot-free? Okay. I know you're taking great pleasure in saying that I'm going to be the oldest one now.
Oh, that's right. You might already be. I don't know.
Sure, backpedal now. All right. This is just thanking you for your service for the council. I believe there's someone else coming behind me. So your dedication to the city for both of you, very much.
Thank you very much.
Don't run over. It's the thank you from city staff for all your service.
Thank you. Shall I open it?
Yes, we should.
Picture some different events around the city.
So staff presented, we did the groundbreaking over at, I can't remember the name.
Outta Pankow.
Yeah, the, for Maine, not Maine, for Bangor Housing.
Yeah.
Which is great. And I grabbed this picture with, I can't remember his name either. It was a friend of my son's, who's the artist who did the canoe down on the waterfront. a friend of my son's, who's the artist who did the canoe down on the waterfront, and I can't remember his name right now. And the last one was all us councillors cutting the ribbon right here in front a couple of weeks ago. So, thank you. Very nice. Anything else?
Good night.
councillor Tremble.
Thank you. I actually never thought I'd be saying and wrapping up 15 years on the city council, but I am. And I got to say, as I walked into city hall tonight, I felt the same emotions when I came to my first meeting in November 1999. It was with, I was excited. I'm always excited to come in, in the city hall. What's going to happen? What we're going to do? I think we did great things tonight, but I just have a lot of people to thank as I wrap things up. I want to thank the voters of Bangor, first of all, to send me, elect me five times to city council. It's, I really, really, really appreciate it. It's been something I've enjoyed for 15 years. Every meeting I've enjoyed, there's been a lot of meetings. I was joking the other day, and I wife, I said, you know, it's over 350 city council meetings alone, not to count the committee meetings, and that seems like a lot of meetings, but when you get elected the first in 1999, it's four different decades, two different centuries, and two different millenniums. So, that's quite a bit of time on the city council. But in addition to the voters, I just want to thank my wife and my family for being patient with me, and they probably actually have enjoyed the fact that I'm home on Monday nights. But, and the people that work for me, they've allowed me to have the flexibility to be out and about and be at these meetings. But, just about, and the fellow councillors, you know, I was looking behind, you know, it was 1834, and for over probably nearly 130 years of the first 130 years of the city councils that we had, the councils are basically decided by the law firms and the, and the county firms and the banks in town would get together and say, you're going to, and that's when, we didn't have the suburbs. People that worked at law firms and the banks, they lived in Bangor, and they would get together at the board meeting and say, you're going to run for council, you're going to run for council. And if you look at the pictures in the hall, it's a bunch of old white guys that served on city council until the 1960s and 1970s. And then we got some, a couple of women on the council. It wasn't until the 1980s that we had the first woman mayor of the city of Bangor, Mary Sullivan. And Mary's living down in Massachusetts now. She's, she and her husband both served as mayors of the city. So, I think we've come a long way in that regard. I think, in my opinion, we have the best, I would call myself probably pretty centrist, but I think we have the best councils when we have a variety of opinions and perspectives. If we have a bunch of like-minded people on the city council, I don't think we're going to make the best decisions for Bangor. It's when we have a variety of opinions, we get together, and we debate those issues, and we come to the best decision. So, even though I might be centrist, I like people from the left and the right, and we're going to hash it out, and we're going to come to the best solutions and best ideas for Bangor. The other group I want to thank is the staff. We've had, and fellow councillors I've served with since getting on, there's been a lot of people that have been on the council since I first got on. And even though, like I said, we have different perspectives and different opinions, I don't think there's one person I've served with that in their heart didn't want what was best for the city of Bangor. Everybody, I think, that served on this council doesn't serve to get ahead, to get back at somebody. They serve because they want what's best for the city of Bangor, and that's what sets us apart from a lot of other towns. So, I also want to thank the staff. When the people of Bangor think, geez, you guys are doing a great job on the council, or you've been, it's been a great time to have you on the council, it's not anything we've done, believe me. It's what the staff has done. We've had a great staff in the city of Bangor. We've got a great staff now. So, as I wrap up my 15th year on the council, I've got to say, I still feel the same. I'm excited to be here. I'm grateful for the confidence that the people of Bangor put in me to elect me, but I believe tonight, as I did when I first got elected, that the best days for Bangor are yet to come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just, earlier this week, had a neighbor come up to me. There was an individual sleeping on their, on their front porch, homeless. Come to find out, they had a voucher, but they didn't know what to do with the voucher. It was a voucher for housing. So, my neighbor and I kind of put our heads together, and I thought I'd make a call to city hall and call up Jenna Jones. And I'll tell you right now, Jenna did an absolutely wonderful job directing this person to get some help from a couple of organizations around town. So, kudos to Jenna. As far as, Dan said everything I was going to say, so I'm not going to prolong things. I want to thank the citizens of Bangor for electing me. I want to thank all the councillors here. We might not always agree, but we get along. Believe it or not, everything you read in the paper, we still get along. Sometimes it's a little tense, but that's okay. We'll get through it. And I also want to thank, I already called out Jenna, but the staff. You guys have made me look good. You make the councillors look good. The staff is just really very, very good. I'll even just saying, when I ran for council six years ago, I just want to make Bangor better. That's all I want to do, and I'll still continue to do that. Maybe not as councillor, but doing something else. So, with that, good night, and we are adjourned.